I call this January 8th, meeting of the York County Planning Commission to order. We do have an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to flip-flop the final public hearing and the first order of new business. Unfortunately, somebody's having trouble is involved in some traffic, so our number two public hearing is gonna get switched. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Anyone opposed? So then, any questions with the minutes from last month? I almost said semester, sorry. If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Derek. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so the first order of business this evening is a public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against the first point of business, which is, excuse me, which is the waiver, W 25-04, for Clint and Deborah Parker to request a land development waiver to remove the internal access road requirement for a major subdivision on property zone rural development. The subject property is located at 2731 Meadow Road in the Clover community and is identified as tax map number 357000056, Council District 3. So we'll get a little bit of information and then we'll open that up.
Thank you. This is a waiver from land development code for internal access requirement for a major subdivision. The reason we're here, oh boy, new one. So you see the pie shape there. When you get more than seven lots, you need to, you're supposed to have internal access of the road. And you see the five lots on the arc of that, and then there's one lot in the middle. They want to divide the lot in the middle into three, so we end up with eight. And it already been subdivided, and they're triggering the major subdivision, which would mean by code are required to have internal access. Here's the zoning, mostly all RUD. This is a proposed shared driveway instead of an access road. It'd still have the one access point on Meadow, and it would access all three lots. And they have enough lot width to meet the minimum driveway separation at 275 feet. The three lots, again, would be accessed by a shared driveway and one point along Meadow. The access wouldn't be increased any more than existing or proposed with the road, so it really doesn't add any more access points. And this access will be maintained by the users, owners of the property, rather than the county or state. So the findings for the internal road, it can't, there has to be a provision that cause unnecessary hardship, and we believe the requirement for the internal access for these three additional lots would be an unnecessary hardship, and it wouldn't result in any different function for the roads or anything, just as well, and also save the county a little money on maintenance. But we find that the proposed waiver meets the criterion, and then we need to find, this can be made without defeating the purpose of the chapter. And basically, the access is a big issue here, and we wanna, for subdivisions of more than seven lots, one would hit all the lots, and this one, three lots with three single-family homes on them, wouldn't require the constraint. We would find necessary as a larger subdivision, and all the other lots on the arc already have access. They wouldn't benefit them. So we would find a proposed waiver meets the criteria, and since it meets both criteria, we would recommend approval for the waiver to allow the subdivision to have a driveway access instead of a roadway access.
Any questions?
I got one question, Kate. Rick, is it, would it be required to do an easement for whoever owns the three, where it would be documented and put in the?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's it?
I have one, a quick one. The gravel driveway basically takes the place of an internal street.
Right.
I don't know if they want to pay for it. I think that they, I'm actually taking over from Mary, and I believe in the staff report says they may pave it, but they would need an apron or commuter driveway standard, and that wouldn't necessarily mean pavement.
But the county's not responsible for maintaining it.
No, no.
Let me ask this question. If that, if that gets approved, the fact that they can put a driveway, a shared driveway, in the future, do they need to come back if they decide they want to put separate driveways that meet the existing criteria at a later date? Let's say they decide they don't want that internal driveway anymore. Each lot wants their own driveway.
Yeah, the variance is pretty specific here, and the papers, and the ask for this was to share a driveway.
Okay.
So if they weren't to share that one driveway, I would need to come and ask permission for it.
Yeah, and if it's included in an easement, it's documented, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, real, real quick one. Rick, could we go back to the photo aerial view real quick?
Yes, sir.
So, from, from looking at the packet here, these, these five properties down along the bottom are included in this development? Is that right?
Well, they're included in the count that makes it a major subdivision. They've already been subdivided.
Right. And so, my question is, every one of those properties enters Good Road? That's how you access those properties, right?
Sure.
So why not for these three, just have each one of them access Meadow Road and not have a requirement for, not have to put the driveway in gravel in at all, and the deviation would just be that they would access from the state road?
Well, that's where that would, well, that is Meadow.
No, sir, I'm, I'm saying there would be no yellow line on that, and each of the three properties that are gonna be three distinct residences would have three separate driveways on state road.
Well, it could be an applicant. This was, this was the request for that.
Okay.
I mean, you could adjust it in your decision if you like.
Okay.
If they would want to do that. I don't know that they would, or, that was seen advantageous. We did make findings that, you know, or in the staff reports, this wouldn't be any more impacting than existing undisdivided parcel or a road, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's a public hearing, so you'll have the agenda.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, public hearings, forgot.
Any other questions? Okay, so this is a public hearing to address this issue. If there are people here to speak either for or against this waiver, if you would come to the podium and just introduce yourself and give us your address, we'd appreciate it, and then we'll put a, you know, time limit of like two minutes, and then, or less, and then have questions as needed.
Okay. So my name's Deborah Parker. Me and my husband Clint actually own the parcel that we're talking about now. We do not own the other four parcels that were previously subdivided.
I'm sorry, and your address?
My current address is 27059 Catamaran Drive in Tika Kay. We have recently purchased the property, and we are subdividing it with our two children. So, actually, they were supposed to remove the shared driveway when we presented this to the council, because when I'd spoke with Mary, and she wanted it proposed as three driveways, because it could be deeded as three separate driveways. We have more than ample road frontage. I think the smallest acre has, or the smallest lot actually has 400 feet of road frontage. So according to South Carolina DOT, we can have individual driveways. Currently, we're choosing not to do individual driveways, but if the property were sold in the future by my children, they could actually then apply for a DOT permit for another driveway.
So Diane, quick question. Would they then run into the issue that John was trying to bring up?
Mike?
Mike. Goodness gracious, I'm just having a night already, and we're already ten, only 10 minutes in, I apologize. So, is it an issue, since it'll be over that seven limit, of coming back later?
So, so like Rick had said, if, if the document includes that they're going to be putting in shared driveway, then they must do that. If they wanted something different, they have to come back and request to remove that requirement. And also, like Rick was saying, the purpose of that shared driveway is instead of having one road, one access, you just have one driveway, one access. That keeps it sort of apples to apples.
Yeah.
If you have three, now you have three access points, where a road would've been built, you just have the one access. That's why staff was supportive of that, like.
I guess my question is more, is that something that they would have, that would have to be a condition of sale, correct? I mean, they couldn't?
Well, they would, they'll put an easement, actually, on the, on the plat that says a shared access point, shared driveway, so that would be required for it to go forward.
Yeah, so if, if you then did decide at some point down the road to sell, it would be a requirement that then you would have to come back?
Sure.
So, I mean, it would be a hardship, I guess, a little bit on you guys, I guess, is what I'm just trying to get at. Okay.
We're okay with that.
Okay.
And if I might, it seems, makes more sense that it's a, the family
Yeah, absolutely.
Building on those three lots, you could conceivably put a gate
Right.
At one location instead of having three gates, if that's what.
And, and that's the purpose.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mind reader.
We wanted one access point for all of us.
It makes sense.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this waiver? Okay. If there's no one else here to speak, we, can I have a motion to adjourn from the public hearing?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. So we are gonna switch it up, and...
Do, do we need to make any ruling on this? So we've closed public hearing, now do we need to make one, right?
So, would it?
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Okay. So we have
I'll second.
A motion on the table and a second. Is there discussion? All of those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Now we get the check mark.
Are you presenting our preliminary plats tonight, too?
I have a, yeah, I have a few. I found out this morning I'd be doing that.
Okay, so we are moving ahead to our first order of new business as opposed to our second preliminary hearing, correct?
Yep.
Perfect.
This works pretty good, because this is a follow-up on a waiver application for the actual preliminary plat. Again, you've called this picture before, and the zoning. Basically, seen this before. You're gonna make the three lots, you know, you have 12 acres, and you're going into three and some change, and two, four and a half acre lots. Pretty simple, they're gonna have well-inseptic, they meet the minimum size requirement of an acre, and they don't need, actually don't need DEC approval for septic at this time, since they're more than two acres. Again, they made the density requirement, they're doing a .33 residential units per acre, when they can do up to one. And the TIA was not required for this project. We believe they have adequate connections in pedestrian facilities and health and safety, their access from Meadow Road intended by large lots of a rural nature, just same as we had before.
Yeah.
The required open space and buffer has been provided, 20% open space is not required for RUD, and tree survey has been completed and accepted by staff. And we recommend approval for this preliminary plat.
Any additional questions?
I got a real, just quick one.
Mike has a question.
Of, when we're in, now this is part of major subdivision, even though they don't own it, right? It's ma, okay, does, does the canopy cover or open space come into play because of that versus the RUD? So, so in other words, this is a subdivision, right? And I think I just read, we didn't have those, that 20% green space.
Yeah, that's true.
Does the fact that it's a subdivision now put them in a different category that they have to have something? I just want to make sure we're dotting i's, crossing t's right, that we might not have to rule some other exception for them with this.
Yeah, and that's what I, having a staff report, I want to read it again. I didn't make the staff report. I'm doing this out.
That's okay. I, I know I'm putting a little pressure on you, Rick.
Oh, it's not any pressure at all. Just take a moment, that's all.
All right.
I can help you out here.
Okay.
So, so RUD does not require any open space, and so, but a tree save, I believe, is required for the minor one as well, or just the major?
Tree save is required for, based on selling, so.
So, so, yeah, they, yeah, so the tree save is required for, for both, whether it's major or minor, RUD does require a tree save.
Okay.
Which we already would've calculated that previously.
And so, the, the amount of green space is determined by the zoning that it's in, not so much by whether it's a subdivision?
So, also make sure we're talking about tree save versus open space and not green space.
Okay.
So, so tree save is required for all of them. Open space is required by the district, and so RUD does not require open space. Whether it's major or minor, it's not required.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Diane.
Any additional questions? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. So we...
If you'd like, I could do, I don't think we have an applicant in here for the last one. If you, if it's okay, I could do Hope's Corner before the next.
What's the?
I could do number four.
We can make a motion to amend the agenda, make it Hope's Corner next.
Okay. I will make an, excuse me, I will make a motion to, again, move up the next, that's the next plat?
Yeah, it'd be number four.
Might I make a different motion, Madam Chair? Why don't we move that one to the end of the agenda for now, and when and if the applicant comes in, we can move it back ahead, so that we don't have to do this if we have two or three more delays?
I'm fine with that.
Is that acceptable?
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we have a motion. You can just amend the motion to Mike's point, and then we just need a second and a vote.
Okay. So is there a second to Mike's amended motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Good idea.
That clears it all, and now we can roll through whatever we need to roll through.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are now moving on to new business, our second item of new business, which is the preliminary plat for JCM Corporation of York County. They're requesting preliminary plat approval for a revision to the previously approved Hope's Corner subdivision. The subject property is zoned rural development and is identified as tax map number 444000136, 137, 144, and 145, Council District 3.
Okay, this is a preliminary plat. It's basically a revision of a, of an approved preliminary plat. The applicant is seeking approval of the revised preliminary plat to allow for removal of the tree save and easements, tree save easements on lots 20 and 21. They want to replace them with proposed tree save on lots 28 and 29, because of building concerns on, on 20 and 21. The tree saves make those lots kind of undevelopable. And this is a picture of the ones on top, where the tree save area is currently, and the ones on bottom are the lots where they're proposing it, near vicinity map. And you see the zoning map from mostly all RUD rules stuff. This is a map made up to show you the areas. The area in blue is the previous tree save sites, they're moving it, the blue areas into the red. And we have some green unchanged areas, but the numbers are working out to make, meet the requirements for tree save. Picture of the plat, kind of on its side, because that's which way the words are going. But nothing else is changing, the lots change, lots aren't changing, or there isn't anything about the previous plat that was approved as proposed to change. So the only thing we're really looking at is a tree survey and just defining that if you've accepted the amended tree survey, that you're granting approval of that. We recommend approval.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving on to our third order of business, the Planning Commission is to review and provide a recommendation to amend Chapter 154, Land Development Code, Section 154.202, Tree Protection During Construction to Increase the Tree Protection Radius for Grand Trees.
All right, so from our previous meeting, as you know, we've had some issues protecting our grand trees. This shot was taken from Clover Village, as, as John had brought to our attention. So, these trees, and all trees within the county that are grand trees, are supposed to be protected at a one-foot canopy radius to one-inch DBH protection radius. And this is pretty standard across the board. Did some comparative analysis from last time. I know that needed to be looked at from last time. So I'll just go to the table here. And most counties and municipalities in South Carolina do use that one-to-one protection radius, but we propose to increase that to 1.5 to give these trees a better chance at survival, and also protect their structural stability, and give them longer-term success. So, there is one county, Lexington County, outside of Columbia, they do protect at a one, 1.5 to one-inch radius protection. So, it isn't heard of, and it is within, within best practice to do so. Got lost a little bit here. I think I'm going the wrong way.
We're now, we're, yeah.
And we're done.
Yeah, you want to get us out of here quickly.
When I get back to, all right.
Close.
Need to back out of here.
I was gonna say, you went backwards.
One more. Oh, one more.
One more.
I don't know how to stop this thing. Okay.
There you go. Great.
Oh, you're going.
No, you're going too fast.
You're way too fast.
You gotta go back.
Uh-oh.
There you go.
It seems to be playing. I think that's the problem.
Yep.
Okay.
No, no worries. There we go.
Sorry. Add the play button on here. All right. So, back to the presentation here. So, under our current tree protection guidelines, so we do the one-to-one inch radius, we'd amend that to the 1.5. This is just diagrams off from last time. If you increase it, you're, you're helping to better protect those feeder roots and structural roots in tandem there. And these are the factors listed in the ordinance. So, it wouldn't change the comprehensive, it wouldn't conflict with the comprehensive plan or the future land use map. This amendment would not conflict with any of the adopted plans. As mentioned before, this amendment falls within best practice, and then lastly, increasing the tree protection radius would help to improve survival rates. And that would, I think, would really contribute to public safety and general welfare, if we are to keep these trees. We do, as mentioned before in the last meeting, we do mitigate, allow for mitigation for a lot of our trees, and one of those concerns is public safety. If these trees are going to be around a lot of people, we definitely don't want any issues with limbs or branches falling on people, or cars, or anything within that vicinity. And increasing that tree protection radius would definitely help, though. And that's, that's pretty much it, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, to put it in perspective, more trees are mitigated than not. I don't know what the percentages are.
Yes.
So what we're basically saying is, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but what we're basically saying is, for the trees that are deemed important enough to keep, that qualify as grand trees, that are healthy, when, when you look at them, and again, it's a minority of, even within the grand tree survey on a, on a given plat, we're just trying to save the ones that have the most opportunity to assist, let's put it that way.
Yes, we're looking at the...
Those two separate, those two different trees, right? The one oak and, you know, the ones that are old.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, most of our grand trees are, are gonna be old trees, I mean, just because of their size.
Yeah.
I mean, you're looking at at least 50 years plus on the, at least the average grand tree from there. And, you know, we, we mitigate 90%. So we're looking at the small minority, the 10% of trees that are deemed valuable enough, and in a good enough position within a site to actually contribute as an asset to a site and have a chance of survival. But even those 10%, if they're not protected properly, they will die if roots are cut off. And I just, I don't believe that a one-to-one protection radius is enough, especially for these older white oaks that are usually our grand trees, so.
So I have a question. So will this, if it passes, when it goes into effect, I mean, immediately, I'm assuming, would that be retroactive to things that are already under construction, or would that be for any new projects?
To my understanding, it would be all new projects.
New, so. So. We wouldn't be able to go out and extend some of the things already in motion?
I can't confirm, but I don't think so. So once something's been approved, it's, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we are moving on to number four in our new business, which is the Master Sign Plan. Rise Partners LLC is requesting an approval of a master sign plan for the Newport Commons Development. The subject property is zoned planning development PD and is located at the southwestern corner of the, of Highway 161 and Highway 7, 274, the Adden Church Road intersection, Council District 3.
Not that hard, Peter.
Ooh.
Hi, Jeff Kirchner, County Zoning.
He's a tree sprout.
I had to do it, I had to give him a hard time. I don't know how the rest of these buttons work, though, let's see. So, we have a master sign plan application for Newport Commons Plan Development. This board's already seen, this plan development's already been approved by council as a rezoning, but this is part of the master sign plan, which is a part of that plan development project. We have the PD zoning, or zoning map for it. Here's the Newport PD rezoning plan, I don't know how you're highlighting it here. Work, oh, it does work. This is pod one, you've looked at this before, this is what the area we're talking about. There's a residential portion, pod two, but this is focused on the retail pod of the PD. So the master sign plan, special districts and regional non-residential developments require master sign plan. Plan developments are required to have a master sign plan, so specifically, it is a special district, basically, PD or a special district. The planning commission may approve modifications to the standards of the sign code, so the applicant has presented a master sign plan. You, we're gonna look at what standards apply, how they compare to our base code standards, and you can make modifications or conditions to it along with the applicant. The applicant has proposed a master sign plan for pod one, as I said, for the Newport Commons. Pod one will be the commercial area. As a PD, the master sign plan will be the sign, design standards for the project. So we just had a master sign plan, that was a modification to the general commercial district base standards. For a PD, there's not really a base, there's not base sign standards per se. There is the general code standards for signs, but specific standards like the size of a ground sign is not, you know, for a PD, you have to establish that. And so the, the master sign plan is both modifying existing base code standards for signs, but also establishing, establishing them for the PD itself. It will be a document with, along with the PD, other stipulations for the PD that you've already looked at. The PC is being asked, asked to approve the requests that deviate from existing code, as we'll point out. The current sign standards will apply to the sign standards, not address the sign plan. There are some just basic sign standards in the, in definitions in the code that we can utilize, and then the master sign plan, if that's adopted, that would be essentially the, that would be the main standards for this particular zoning district. Number one, type of signs, monument entrance signs, the applicant is proposing four entrance signs, two at Old York Road, one at Adder Church Road, and one at Leinberger Lane. Leinberger Lane is the new road they're building off of, basically on the corner of Old York Road to access into the plan development, so it'll be a new road. The actual dimensional standards proposed for these signs will be equal or less than the code standards for the regional non-residential development. That's the regional non-residential development, or as you remember, commercial developments, non-residential developments, they have at least a hundred thousand square foot of floor area. This development far, far exceeds that. And we're kind of use that as a comparator for this PD master sign plan. The signs A and B, which we'll flip to that, let's see, so we have A and B right there, that's the largest proposed sign. Large, signs A and B are proposed to be twenty feet in maximum height and one hundred fifty square feet in maximum message area. Sign C, which is a smaller sign, will, will be six feet in max height and nineteen square feet in max message area. And sign D will be eleven feet in max height and fifty feet in max message area. We'll get to the map and show where these different signs are at, but that's the, that's the size and dimensions they're proposing for these different monument signs. The ma, the master sign plan deviates from zoning code by proposing to have four entrance signs for the development for pod one. Pod one will have three road frontages, that's one extra, basically multi-tenant or entrance sign, monument entrance sign, you know, because it's, the code allows one ground sign, one entrance sign per road frontage. And there's three road frontages, four signs. That's, that's, that's the deviation from just being a, just a, for this, for these signs, for being a, if it was a regional non-residential development. Again, here's, are the actual signs proposed and the dimensions of them. And the last one is E, which we'll talk about the out parcel signs, they're proposed, which is also in here. Here's the map, so we have, this will be Leinberger Lane and Old York Road, that's sign A. Sign B is another entrance, also on Old York Road. Sign C, also on Leinberger Lane, but farther down, basically entering from the residential portion of the PD. And sign, sign D is proposed to be on Adder Church Road. And those are the four entrance signs. This is another aerial, it kind of shows the location on the parcel, giving an idea of where these signs will be located. The second type of signs are monument signs for the outlots, so there's four, there's four proposed outlots, and they're proposing to have a seventy-foot square foot max sign area, like a ground sign, and with a maximum height of twelve feet. As we've talked about with the previous master sign plans, when you do a non-residential, regional non-residential development, you're supposed to have just one, or the code requires one joint development sign per road frontage. But they're asking for each parcel, out parcel, outlot, to have their own sign as well, and use the entrance signs for the development and for like the primary tenants on that parcel, that retail parcel, and each outlot also have their individual sign. So that's a deviation from code. And the size of the sign is comparative with our, our, our minor non-residential development lots, basically our smallest retail lots, and their sign, sign size. So if they, each, as we talked about before, each individual lot, if they just had a sign apart from the development, this is about the size of the sign it would be. So it's not a deviation from the size. For wall signs, the applicant is requesting buildings with, requesting buildings less than one hundred thousand square foot of floor space, the maximum wall, wall sign message area will be two square feet per one linear foot of wall width. And that's for primary walls as established in the PD and the site plan for the PD. Or an option of ten percent of the facade area with a maximum total message area of four hundred square feet. This is a deviation because the code allows only, current code only allows one square foot per every one foot of wall width. And allowing the ten percent option is an increase, is also a change to the base code. As this board knows, there's a text amendment in front of the council right now to change some of the wall sign standards, to possibly allow a five percent option, to allow a maybe possible larger, four hundred square feet up to maybe six hundred square feet total message area. It's currently in review now. So some of these standards are gonna meet base code, just not right at the moment, and, but some of the things like the two per one and the ten percent is not what's being proposed right now in the text change. So that is a little bit different than even what's the text change shows. For, they're requesting for buildings with more than a hundred thousand square foot in floor space area, the maximum wall sign message area will be one for one or one square foot for every one foot, linear foot of wall width, or five percent of the primary wall facade area. Again, reflecting back to possibly a code change, up to a maximum message area of six hundred square feet, which if you remember, that's being proposed possibly as well for buildings over a hundred thousand square foot, possibly going up to six hundred. So that, that could become base code, but currently, the master sign plan's kind of reflecting that proposal. Wall signs continued, the proposed PD will allow more than one wall sign per primary wall. Again, that's another proposed text change, it may happen where we don't have a restriction on the number of signs, just on the square footage, and if they want to use it in a couple different signs or just one large sign, they'll have that option, that the PD is gonna, master sign plan's reflecting that possible code change as well. Here's the examples for buildings greater than a hundred thousand square feet, just kind of shows how it would look with some of the building designs proposed. For buildings less than a hundred thousand square foot, so more like the shopping center, this is gonna be the two-for-one possibly, or ten percent. So that's kind of like, they have like some examples there of what it could look like with that sized signage on the building, the buildings they're looking at building. Here's some more examples of that, designs. Other signage, most of the other master sign plan reflects, either reflect, referring back to base code, about temporary signs, signs, window signs, incidental signs internal to the site, canopy signs will be calculated as part of the wall area signage, so that's pretty consistent with code, so not a big changes there. This is the master sign plan that the applicant has proposed for port, pod one. Essentially, this is gonna be the standards, if it's adopted, that will apply when we approve signage, and it will take place of a base code unless we need to reflect back to base code on something like it's referred to here. And essentially, these are the proposed standards for this PD. For the master sign plan, we, the commission may approve, the proposed master sign plan is presented, approve with amendments or conditions or deny the application. Please approve or modify or deny based on the presenting, presentation number, so we have one through four. So we had the monument signs, as we already talked about, with their dimensions, and also allowing multiple monument signs for pod one at the entrances. The outlot monument, outlot monument signs with their dimensions and also allowing those outlots individual signage, even though there's gonna be those entrance signs as well, and that's a deviation from the code, base code. We have the wall signs with the two different types, you know, buildings more than a hundred thousand square foot, less than a hundred thousand square foot, allowing more than one sign per wall, on primary walls is what they have proposed. And of course, the other signs, those are mostly just reflecting back to code, what it is in the master sign plan, so I just wanted to kind of put it on there. Are there any questions? Do you want to go back to a particular slide?
Oh, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. So for the individual out parcels, the, the deviation, do we have examples of that sign? Which one is that?
Yes, I'll go back to that. It is E.
E.
E. They obviously don't know the tenants, or, you know, they're not really, but they're having given a template there of what I guess each of those outlot signs will be, what they'll look like.
So they're actually, they're actually larger than the internal small sign?
Yes, they're, they're a little bit larger than some of the smaller entrance signs, like I believe, like D.
The small.
Or C. C is the smallest one, the one off of, kind of internal to the plan development right here, off of Leinberger Lane. That's a fairly small, just almost entrance sign. I mean, entrance sign, but like, like directional entrance sign as opposed to advertising sign, like the larger signs, yeah.
So we're talking then, three more signs? I mean, we have outlot one, two, and three, oh, and four.
There's four as well.
No.
There's four outlots.
Do you happen to have, it was very helpful, I thought, last month when we had pictures of the larger signs in terms of sort of, you know, examples within the community?
Yeah, we didn't have, you know, we don't have a comparisons for this exact types of sign, you know, as we, as we...
Particularly the twenty-foot tall strikes me as very tall. Do we have some, I mean, can you think of some around here?
As we talked about the master sign plan, I mean, the last master sign plan we just discussed, that would be a larger sign for, outside of maybe Caroway's is a sign, it's quite big. But out of our jurisdiction, when we provide those examples after the board kind of came back and reheard that, we went, I think those were Rock Hill.
Those were on Rock.
So those weren't necessarily our jurisdiction, so I don't think we have something comparable exactly with this jurisdiction. But I will say the A and B sign, they do meet the, the code standard for like this It's just, it's just a number, so like the one hundred fifty, if it was in general commercial, GC, like we talked about before, not a PD, if it was a hundred and fifty square feet, then that would meet that code standard.
And we don't actually have any height restrictions, it's just overall square footage, correct?
It's twenty.
It is twenty.
Yeah, that's...
We don't have any in the area that high.
Yes, I guess that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize a little bit more.
Can we go back to the sign represent, the drawing schematic with the heights of the signs?
Right.
So for A and B, twenty feet is the max, ten feet is the max, and then you're limited on the amount of square footage of signage that can be there.
Where the red is.
Right? So you've been putting those three together, you're saying that's what it would look like with the sign being in the red and white area and the black, the bottom being bricks or whatever to support the sign to that height.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Does that... Yeah, the tenant, the red part, and I think the applicant's here, if he wanted to ask about like the design, but I believe what's in the red is, at least on the first three, is the message area.
That's kind of what I'm getting...
And there's, I think there's a notation on the...
My question was the transparency of version E.
Maybe you can see on my printout, but I think there's a notation on the development as well, like a small sign incorporated in there too.
Yeah, the other one we looked at, it was vertical on the left-hand side, and we decided that took up too much space, but this one...
Hard to see on there, but it does say Newport Commons in that middle, like right under the red.
Yeah.
So it does have some extra signage on that block as well, calculated.
Yeah, I'm not trying to split hairs, but is, is it tenant or tenants? Is it the main?
Well, I don't know, we haven't got anything on message area, just design. I would say, and the applicant maybe could speak more precisely, it does seem like these main entrance signs are directory for the, for this lot two and lot three, these lots. And that's why the out parcels are requested to have their own signage, because they're not gonna be represented on these entrance signs. They might be able to speak, you know, if there is gonna be some representation, but I'm taking it that sign A, B, C, and D won't have, are not planned to have the outlots tenants on their signs. Maybe just the anchor and maybe some of the lots. Like I said, we don't have details on how the message area will be used, as we talked about before, we can't dictate message area, only the area provided to have the message.
Any additional questions?
Yeah. Now I'm gonna get into transportation engineering, but it'll be a real quick question. Sign A, sign B that you got up here, this is in a curve, and are there besides site triangles in a curve? Do you also add footage that has to be back, you know, so that you, you're coming in a curve?
It's a, it's a good question, we had, we had this, obviously talked about it before. We have the plan, we have the plan, development site plan here for the PD rezoning. What we have not had, unlike the other project, is a civil plan review, so we haven't gotten the very details, but they're not asking for any variance on this ten-foot minimum setback for the ground signs. And obviously, we will still look at the, the engineering on the, the road entrance, DOT standards, R standards, site distance, easements, you know, that stuff. We haven't gotten that close on it, because we haven't actually gone to a civil plan review of the retail section. This is providing the standards to start that review, you know, just like the whole PD rezoning.
Reason why I'm bringing that up, if you can turn into those outlots that are on the other side of Old York Road, that's the concern I have. You turn left into those, you don't see these people coming at fifty miles an hour, because the signs might block it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to work on that, and obviously, the out parcels, they don't have direct access, they, they have these shared access drives where these entrance signs are gonna be. So you're gonna have some signage for the business, and then you have to know, but that's where they do have the logoing on the design of Newport Commons, so you have to just kind of know that, you have to go past this part, like outlot four, to get to the entrance to get into it.
Yeah, I wouldn't even question it if that was a tangent section through there, straight.
No, it's a good question, and like I said, that's what we have to deal with when we start getting into the detailed engineering on an actual civil plan with grading, you know, again, easements, sightlines, all that.
Cool, thank you. Cool, thank you.
And again, I believe the applicant's here if you have any questions.
Just to follow up on your question, the last exception that we made was driven by the fact that the size of the sign was maximized because there were future potential stores, commercial stores in that development that wanted to reserve part of that. If you recall, there were two sections.
The place at the back, yeah.
Yeah, for Westlake. And we also considered providing additional space for the, for the main stores. But I would have a potential issue if we're talking about whoever the anchor store is creating a sign that's a single sign on, on the monument, the four monuments, that's just promoting that one anchor store.
Well, he said that.
Is that?
Yeah, I don't.
Can we ask that question?
Yeah, you can ask that question because again, what, you know, as staff, we don't have that information. We can't really dictate message area. So, you know, how they plan to use it, that's kind of their.
Right, and we can't dictate message, but we can. If the applicant is here, would you mind stepping up and just answering that question specifically on the larger outbuilding or out parcel signs? Is it the, is it one or is it many? And if you don't mind introducing yourself and giving us your address, please?
Sure. My name is Mark Kozewski. I work for MJM Architects. My address is out of Nashville, Tennessee. If you still want to, 7234 Althorpe Way, Apartment U9, Nashville, Tennessee. As for the messaging, it is unclear for right now how many tenants we may have maybe on the messaging. So right now is what we were looking for, along with staff not being able to decide what the message is. We're looking for the message size. So that we have the capability and flexibility of, as to what we may need.
Okay.
Does that answer your question enough?
Well, the issue is, right, we don't have, we don't know any of the tenants really, you know, so for the development itself. So right now, this, this helps the tenants depending on what our flexibility can be.
And I guess I'm hearing there's concern that if it's just one huge name up there that that would be distracting possibly to traffic or.
Yes.
You know, seem out of place.
Yes.
Well, kind of along those same lines is when we did the deviation last time, it was because, okay, you need a little bit of extra room because you're trying to get all of these different things to fit. And if you're going to have just one entity, why do you need a deviation? Why do you need things to be better than what's already in the code? I think it's kind, am I reading between the lines okay, John?
No, I think you're right. Yeah, exactly.
I didn't want, I didn't highlight it. So I wanted to make sure, here's the anchor tenant. There's also these shops here, which are seen on the, like the wall sign demonstration and shops here. And these are sort of lots one, two, and three of sort of the main retail lot. And then you have the outlots as well. So I just want to make sure that it's not just the anchor tenant lot. There's actually shops here, shops here proposed as well.
We understand. What, what we're trying to clarify a little bit is what I think our intention was the last time we did this was, oh, okay, you want to advertise multiple things and to make the signs big enough that they're legible and people aren't slowing down and causing traffic jams to read. Yeah, you might need a little bit more space to do that. But if, if your intention is to sign it only with the anchor store, then are we making a deviation that's going to set a precedent, it's going to cause other issues for us down the road? Because you guys have taken a lot of time to put the code together and say, this is the size sign you need. So I, that's, that's where I'm.
Well, I mean, he is saying there will be some smaller internal stores.
Right.
But.
But we don't know what's going to be on the sign, right? So it's, which I guess is something we could put in the, in our recommendation, right?
Because similar to your line of thought, I'm thinking when you look at the size of the anchor store, anywhere around here when we pass a Lowe's, Target, Walmart, even a Publix or Harris Teeter, that anchor store, you, how many of us look at the outlet sign? You see it coming on the building, but it's those smaller ones that may be on the side of the anchor that you're looking, if I'm driving and, you know, we really don't look at 2,800 block, 2,900 block. Most people don't do that. They're going to look at the sign.
Right.
And if it's going to be used for that purpose, those other buildings, then I could see the additional size because to your point, you don't want to slow down. If I can see it up the road, okay, it's in there, turn in, figure out the rest.
Sure, sure.
But I've never seen an anchor sign, a sign that big for one store when you can see it on the building a mile away.
Right. Well, the, the other thing is back when I had hair, I used to look at those signs to see where I wanted to go. And now, now we all have these things in our hand where we just say, we want to go to this place. And then we say, oh, okay, oh, that's in the public shopping center. I know where that is, right?
That's typically how we get.
I just want to make one thing, point clear to the commission, that content, we really can't regulate content signs. You're approving the size of the sign, the applicant can put whatever they may on it. So I don't, I don't know that it would be proper to tell them that they have to have any certain display on the sign.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
I, I guess I have a question. With the signage, and this may be a question for the applicant. If I want to lease space in here or whatever, if I want my business advertised on that sign out there, do I pay anything additional? Because I'm sure revenue is tied to it. They're going to throw as many on that sign as possible if it drives revenue.
So typically, the way signage is allocated to a sign from a tenant is based on the size of their square footage within the development. So they're not charged for the sign itself or the tenant, the panel itself. But the bigger the tenant, usually the bigger size of the panel they have on their signage on, out by the road. And the reason for the large sign out on the main road is because of the speed and the entrance. And roughly the distance that building is from the York Road, probably about 1,000 to 1,500 feet. It's a pretty significant amount. And when all those out parcels are fully developed, you really won't see that building from York Road. And when, we've also reduced the other two signs to being a lot smaller because they're really targeted for the development behind the space, right? Just to get them to understand where the entrance is.
Yes, if it's helpful in looking at it, you know, sign D and sign C, if we were just dealing with the entrance signs, are smaller than what's allowed as well. So there is some balance depending on which different roads. So it's, they're not all at maximum size for the road frontage for a multi-use development, so.
Yeah, you would think if you wanted to optimize the square footage for, is, is the red area the maximum square footage? Not the entire sign?
There's more signage outside the red area.
Because if it isn't, I mean, if you look at C, D, and E, the bottom, the bottom brick area.
It's hard to see on here, but it has tenant, it has Newport Commons, and it has another, I think, might be a small area depending on the sign, at least on the A and B. So it definitely had the Newport Commons. I think the area, I think you could say that the red areas for the most part is the message area. Yeah. Other than Newport Commons, the red area is the message area and the rest is brick or block or whatever.
Okay, it's hard, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to see up here.
Maybe one other thing, if you could go back to our list that you wanted to review point by point? At the end here? Yes, sir. So I, I heard mention of there's things under considerate, councils considering currently about making some changes to this. So is there anything in these that if we were just to approve as is would conflict with anything that council's considering?
I wouldn't say conflict. What we're saying is some of these standards that might be a deviation today, if they do update, adopt the wall sign modifications that we talked about a couple of months ago, then those won't be deviations from the base code, like for wall signs.
Okay, could you, could you point those out to us in this abbreviated list real quick? Of what things would no longer be a deviation, considered a deviation?
Um, the 5% is no, is not a standard currently, but it's being proposed as adding it as an option. So when they add the 5%, if they adopt that, that won't be a deviation. The 400 square feet maximum sign area, even up to 600 square feet maximum sign area for these size of buildings may, if they go forward with, it's been presented to council in front of them, may not be a deviation anymore as of today, it's not in the code. And they having more than one wall sign per wall, that's also being considered to be removed and just basing everything on square footage and not dictating one sign as opposed to like groceries and, you know, outdoor or wherever, you know, kind of breaking that message area up as we talked about when we talked about the possible text change. So those are things that won't be, that may not be deviations in the future. It would still be part of the master sign plan. They still present this master sign plan as a document and also as a PD. There are certain things like the, when we compare these sizes for the entrance signs and the out parcel signs, these are based on our base code like it was a general commercial district. But of course, with the PD, that's not a, that's not a district that has its own ground sign standard. So we're almost kind of established in them. The only, only thing we know as staff is do is compare what we have in our code. But it is kind of making, especially in the ground signs, because the wall signs kind of cover all districts. But the, but the ground signs don't really have standards. So this master sign plan will be establishing those standards. And we're trying to just do comparison if it was just a general commercial district as opposed to a PD, you know, for the board to kind of consider the, that, those as deviations.
And, and anytime you do a PD, there could be different stipulations within that PD that varies from one to another anyway.
It could be, yeah. With a PD, it could just say, and we had Pete, like in the past, that just said, it will meet zoning code for the signs.
Right, right.
Or they could have specific standards or they could do the master sign plan. So there, there is options there. It is a specific district, it's not a base district, so again, it's a special district.
Now, the point I was making more is that a PD by itself is somewhat specialized. So you could have two PDs right next to each other that have slightly different requirements.
That is true. And what we're talking about, this wouldn't be allowed in GC. Well, we talked about that last master sign plan, but this is not GC. It's kind of its own thing. I mean, that's how the district works.
Okay.
Can you go back to the overhead shot? It's got the four red dots representing where the signage will be.
That's right.
Yeah. And so right now, the applicant can have one monument sign per road frontage? Is that right?
Yeah, the base code for an entrance sign or a monument sign for development is one per road frontage. And there's going to be another road frontage when they build Leinberger, Leinberger Lane.
So they would, would sign A be a sign to Leinberger Road?
It's both. It's on the corner, so it, it's either, they're either having two on Leinberger or two on Old York. I just said.
Really, we have two on Old York and that's the deviation that we're being asked.
That would be a deviation if this isn't a base district.
But outside of that, the sign itself, as individuals, all meet applicable code.
Yeah, they're either equal, the size and height and the basic dimensions and/or less.
Sure.
Like C and D are, are less than the maximum allowed for this size of development.
And so sign C would be a deviation, but it's much smaller than any of the other signs. It's an internal neighborhood sign.
If you switched it and said, sign A is Leinberger, even though it's on the corner, which is legitimate, that could be. Then, and B is Old York Road and D is Agnew Church Road, then C, the smallest one, might, you could look at as the only extra sign. That's true, that's a good point because it's only, again, that one sign. If, again, trying to compare it back to the base code, if it's general commercial against PD, but, you know, we had to compare it to something. If it was GC, we'd be talking about probably sign C being the extra sign as per the base code standard, yes.
And so the, the, the sign of the, the size of the sign and the area, the square footage of the message area, that's not in question at all, right? It's just the extra sign.
It's a question in a sense we need to establish for, for the PD, but it's not a question in a sense that we're calling it a deviation from base code for this size of commercial development.
Wall sign clarification, we're currently one foot per.
Linear foot?
Yeah, for linear foot. I think for GC, we talked about one and a half and then we settled on two.
That was for the previous.
Yes.
Manifest, master sign plan, yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to say, we're not exceeding, we're not exceeding what we had already approved.
Yes, the previous approval for a master sign plan in GC was two to one.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
I think I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented by staff. Complete.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to approve as presented. Is there discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't want to have, before she go through one, two, three, four again, brother.
Excuse me, if I could, the applicant is here for the waiver. If you want to go ahead and bring that back up, I appreciate that.
Okay, so before we jump into number five in old business, we're going to backtrack to our second public hearing of the evening, which is waiver W 25-10. Jonathan Street is the applicant on behalf of HOF LLC owner. They're requesting a land development waiver from the required driveway separation of 325 feet on a road with posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour. The subject property is located at 3474 Highway 21 in the Fort Mill community and is identified as tax map number 721000055, Council District 7.
Thank you, we found it. This is for the dash-in, proposed dash-in food store. They're asking for a waiver from the requirement for the 325-foot minimum driveway separation requirement. This here's the, the site, the current House of Fireworks is there and they're proposing to remove that building and make a convenience store with gas. Here's your zoning with the GC and leftover UD all around it. Here's the difference. So basically, they're going to go from about 121 to the, 190 to 152. And you can see the, the first. The first, this, this would have been, this is a previous existing one going into the House of Fireworks. And they'd kick it down and get it a little further away from McDonald's and bring it up to 152. Of course, they're here because they, they need to meet the 325 according to the, the road standard and the speed and everything. So they want to increase the driveway separation from 121 to 152, but still under the required amount. The applicant has tried to gain a shared driveway agreement with the McDonald's, it's to the north, and they were unwilling to, to deal with them. And the applicant does have an approved TIA and concurrence with DOT with, with their change in the current configuration. The applicant has to show some unnecessary hardship. And of course, with only 280-foot of frontage on that lot, they wouldn't be able to gain access at all. And, and right now, there's no other access available to that lot. We find it meets it. And then, you know, you can maybe make this waiver without defeating the 10th chapter. And here, it's, you know, the efficient movement of traffic and, you know, they've gone through the, the, the exercises of trying to get a little better access. But, you know, we've reviewed this and they do got a TIA and got some concurrents. So we would find that it meets criteria. We'd recommend approval and it would be a deviation of 173 feet from the current standard.
Just got one question, Rick. Looks like it's a right in, right out.
Correct.
Okay, so that'll remain even when the new roads put in, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there'll, there'll be a barrier in the middle or an island in the middle. And I believe they're going to have a little triangle, I call it pork chop in.
Yeah, I go by there all the time. Thank you.
As part of what they're being asked to do is also has a slight rewidening.
Yeah, and when they come, you know, they're going to do more work on that road, so they, they showed on your packet, they'll show a little, a little different return when they come through there and kind of improve 21, or the road in front of it along, eventually a roadside. They've looked into the future.
Was there any thought of just making the entrance on the new road, not...
Yeah, well, you know, with DOT projects, we don't know when that will occur, so, they do have a plan to access that when it's made, but until then, they wouldn't have any access to that lot.
I actually think it's good to have both.
Well, I just think people are going to come down here and pull what you need.
Is, do we know what the 51 realignment is going to look, supposed to look like? There's a penny's for progress that's realigning that. Do we know where that's going to end up?
It's supposed to be right on the south side of this.
And, and, yeah, and they don't show it, I mean, they get to the very end of this picture is where the realignment would go.
If you go to the, I think, do you have the vicinity map in here? Yeah, so you can see where 51, they've already actually done the, the lots just south of the red area there, that's where the new one will come through.
So it's going to go, that'll be a light at that corner?
There'll be a light there as well. Yeah, so it's going to line up in between the, this current applicant and the property sound.
And then the idea is to take out the balance of 51 below that?
Yes, then they'll put a cul-de-sac, where 51 now intersects with 21.
Yep.
And direct traffic over to, to 21 there at 51, the new 51 will wrap around.
It's just nice to know what that area is going to look like supposedly.
At some point in the future.
At some point in the future. Penny's for progress.
Do we have any additional questions? If not, is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, sorry, it is a public hearing. Just getting carried away again.
It's all right.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on behalf of or against this project, we invite you to the podium, so if you please share your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Mark Shirkland, civil engineer for this project, well, working with John Street, who's our lead civil engineer here. We're 1942 E 7th Street in Charlotte. I think he already, already covered most of the main points here, but we've got two adjacent highway projects. Highway 21 is being approved, Highway 51 is going to be built. We tried to negotiate an access to share it with McDonald's, we got shot down from them. We don't even have enough frontage on the parcel, it would put the, our entrance in the intersection if we actually adhered to it. So we started conversations with DOT and the county right away at the beginning of this project. We went through a couple of iterations, and this is what they determined is the one spot that they can approve. And it's basically our only option to give this site some degree of access. Does help a little bit more from the existing conditions, gives you an extra 30 feet, but we're still far short of what the code would hire otherwise. That lane turning into McDonald's is going to be widened, so right now it's kind of a tapered turn lane, but it'll be a full width through lane up to that McDonald's entrance with the construction of our project here. The Highway 51 access, we don't know when that's going to happen, so that's why we need this waiver to get the access on 21 here.
Thank you.
Any questions? Also, thank you so much for shuffling the agenda. Stuck in traffic earlier, appreciate it.
It happens, we understand.
If you came from Charlotte, yeah.
Yeah, we all drive in, so we get it. Are there any additional questions? Is there, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this topic? If not, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So is there a motion on...
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving back to our rezonings in new business number five, that would be rezoning 25-49. Latif Taheri Azar, applicant owner, requesting to rezone two parcels that total .19 acres from UD to RMX 6. The subject parcels are located on Ridley Street in Rock Hill, and the properties are referenced as tax map numbers 670-0000059 and 060, Council District 4.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, these two parcels are just outside Rock Hill, along Porter Road, part of a subdivision called Sunrise Acres. The applicant is proposing to rezone these so they can build single-family detached homes on them. You can see they're right in the center of the subdivision, and rezoning district, a lot of this area is zoned UD. You can see that there's a sprinkle of RSF 30 through here, a lot of these were rezoned as part of the UD rezoning project a couple of years back, and RSF 30 was chosen to allow the manufactured homes that were pre-existing on these sites. The future land use is municipal infill, given how close it is to the city, and looking at what City of Rock Hill is expecting, they're looking for interstate employment, and that's roughly equivalent to our R 77 corridor employment designation, and we're looking for manufacturing distribution uses here. Despite that, we do recommend approval. Again, it's not consistent with the comp plan, either ours or the Rock Hills, but the active UD zone is completely incompatible with the surrounding established neighborhood. Again, these two parcels are right in the center of what is entirely residential space, and RMX 6 is the only residential district that will accommodate the lots of this size. Any questions for staff?
We didn't see an aerial, is there, it looks like on that one map, there's a building that is out there, is that, or is that a parking lot or something?
Sorry, I did forget to mention, there is, one of them does have a derelict, I think it's 1,200 square foot building there. It used to be a residence.
So are they going to knock it down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll meet all the, what do you call it? Side requirements, side yard requirements, but, okay, thanks.
Any additional questions?
No, this one's pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second, is there discussion?
It's me.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Let's see, moving on to rezoning 25-51. Old York Road LLC, applicant owner, requesting to rezone two parcels that total 2.55 acres from RSF 42 NC and NC to GC. The subject parcels are located on Alexander Love Highway in York, and the properties are referenced as tax map numbers 395-0000010 and 011, Council District 3.
Yeah, these two parcels are directly south of New York, kind of major intersection of York Highway, Alexander Love, and Old York. The applicant proposes to build a parking lot as an accessory use to the adjoining automobile dealership that's just, you can see it there in the aerial, just within City of York's jurisdiction. These two parcels have residences on them with a total of three access points onto Alexander Zoning map shows that there's a lot of commercial uses in this space, and reflecting that is a future land use plan where we see that a lot of this is designated for a transitional area, as we're going to see these residences kind of switch over to commercial uses. So we recommend approval of the request, and while it's not directly consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, it does allow for the expansion of a pre-existing neighboring business, it will match the other commercial uses within general vicinity, and will remove these residential access points from a highway. Any questions for staff?
Is it, is it just to build a parking area, basically? Okay.
What's the buffer between the residences and the parking?
So, with any commercial development, the, I believe it's a type C buffer, which always needs an opaque element, I think six-foot opaque element. Specifically for a parking use, I believe that it remains, I think it's strictly tied to the zoning district, but perhaps Diane can speak more to that?
You're correct, yeah, it actually goes by the use, and so, but it was a type C buffer for there. They can, I think it's 50-foot, they can reduce it if they put in a fence.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, is there discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to rezoning 25-52. Chris Goodwin, applicant, Haven Home Investments LLC owner, requesting to rezone a 20.18 acre parcel from RMX 10 to RUD. The subject parcel is located on Hare Road in Fort Mill, and the property is referenced as tax map number 738-0000046, Council District 7.
This property is just outside town of Fort Mill, near Dobie's Bridge, Fort Mill Parkway intersection. Again, it's 20 acres, you can't really tell by the scale of the map, but it's quite a large space. The applicant proposes to create a major subdivision to attach single-family residences with lots size averaging between one and two acres. There's a lot of residential zones directly around that kind of Dobie's Bridge, Fort Mill Parkway intersection, but you do see we do a but rural development. And future land use plan, again, a lot of our more intense residential uses remaining around the intersection and coming off that single-family residential. We recommend approval of this request, and while it's not directly consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, being a little bit less intense than expected within the space, the current RMX 10 district is much more intense than expected, and allows for housing types that are incompatible with the area, and of course, it does neighbor an RUD property. Any questions for staff?
If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on to rezoning 25-58. JD Renovations LLC, owner applicant, is requesting to rezone a 5.89 acre parcel from AGC to RUD. The subject parcel is located on Mobley Store Road in Rock Hill, and the property is referenced as tax map number 514-0000077, Council District 5.
Yeah, this parcel is in the south side of the county. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the space and build three homes. The parcel in question, though, is kind of an interesting case because it has road frontage on Mobley Store Road, that Lark Lane, as well as Englewood Road. So here's some ways that the applicant proposes to divide this. You can see some of the, the different divisions here. Again, the idea is to have access points on each of those three roads that keep them private and separate. It's currently zoned AGC, and again, it abuts that RUD space, and we can kind of see the interaction between zoning map and future land use map as we have rural residential coming down from the northeast, kind of encroaching on this AGC space. So we recommend approval of this request, and while it's not directly consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, again, that rural residential space is organically coming down southeast towards this intersection here, it neighbors a lot of other properties that are already zoned RUD, and the subject parcel, again, has the road frontage across three different spaces to give everyone private access points. Any questions for staff?
Couple, couple real quick, if we could roll back to the hand drawing, so these are possibilities, but not just, just some, like they are hand drawings of what we might do, but we don't have a final plan, is that right?
Certainly. With it being, you know, almost six acres going down from AGC to RUD, the minimum limit would be an acre. They could technically do more.
So if we make this approval, it could turn into five or six?
Given, there are some restrictions given frontage, and they've expressed intent to do three at most.
Understood, but by right, if they wanted to decide and do it, they could turn it into six, right?
With easements as part of it.
The, the second question I had, where was that that I was trying to see? So... I'm sorry, Jonathan, this is just, Jonathan Thomas, listen to me, dude, what did you do? What did you do to me?
I'm rubbing up on you.
Holy smokes.
I'm rubbing up on you.
I need, I need to see one of the other maps that I saw, one of the other pictures, maybe just, yeah...
The AGC versus RUD?
Yeah, I know, I know, we were down to one, okay, maybe this is it, yeah. So, that's, that's zoning, that's how it's zoned now, is that's RUD above that? Right, that's what I'm...
Yeah, it's not within RUD presently, but the request is to go to RUD.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what's the lighter rural development? How is that property zoned in the lighter green then? It's where I'm, because this is, so dark green's AGC.
That's right.
Is the lighter green RUD there?
That's right.
Okay, so this is on the edge of existing RUD?
That's right.
Okay, okay, that was, that was something else I was trying to clarify there. Okay.
To go along with your question, Mike, so the 2035 land use plan makes the distance between rural residential or whatever and the ag here makes it a little bit further away, which, you know, it's almost...
Certainly, and, and, you know, it is always a reminder that future land use map is, is a guide. A lot of these, in this case, the zoning is kind of showing us where the, the future land should follow.
It's almost like they're increasing the ag.
No, what was, what was confusing me is these, if you could see these two slides side by side, right? So future land use says, you know, we see agriculture being to here, but the actual where we are, it's actually further away from that.
Right.
And that, that's where I had this disconnect in my head.
But if you look at it, it draws a line straight through multiple properties, which is literally just the county.
No, I, I get it, I get it, I'm just saying, I was having a little bit of a disconnect following because normally it's the other way around, right?
Good point.
Okay, so it's, okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Other additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, I am very hopeful that we hold to the three sites. I don't know that we can impose any kind of limitation when we do something like this, but I am very hopeful that the applicant will be true to their word and go with some version of what they proposed, but not go beyond lots that are going to get down to one acre and try and put five or six folks in there.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. So let's see, our other business is to take a look at our meeting dates for next year. Does anyone have any major issues or...
Conflicts?
Nope.
Do we need to have an approval of that at all, or no?
I don't think so.
Yes?
Oh, it is, yes.
It's an action item, isn't it? Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the dates as outlined.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Any questions on the rezoning tracking sheet? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, and a Merry Christmas.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
I'll.
Anyone opposed? Have a good night.
See you next year.